Yeah. Oh, I thought that was the thing. She just go like this. Oh, your key. It has noise. This is good. A lot of noise. Let's turn it down a little. Too much stuff. You throw them back in. They use a catalyst. It's called Ted. You know, when you throw mine in. But it's so expensive. Thanks for the first dogs. It's really cool. It's funny. Service the Ted. Guy has a big round model. There is a fire soon. Says they have to carry on board. Just enough to start the.
Gotcha. So it's not like it has to be feeding there constantly. Just once it ignites the jet building.
Fuel's ignited in their style. It's awesome. Cause they've got these two 454 engines inside this thing.
Yeah.
They use that to turn the turbines and start up the first time. So they get the turbines cranking and it turns the fuel on. And it gets the button for the cab. It ignites the fuel. Big huge blue flames can shoot out the bag. It's great.
Yeah, I've seen Blackbird up close and something just sitting there. The passing little handle then you know like.
Can you face it? Yeah, they have rumbles. And then they start the other engine. Like maybe a two engine. Watch them fly on high.
The only other engines that not were more impressive were the engines off of the Saturn V.
That is quite, quite a move to that. Because I know what they want about NASA. They look at the old Saturn V and like walk in the room. First thing you see is the body of it with the J2, the five J2.
Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting, a special day today. We get to vote for our representatives and various propositions. If you please stand with me and our flag salute. Remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Uh, there's one thing I need to take out of order this morning. You know, it's always nice to have an opportunity to honor someone and also sometimes to embarrass them. And today is someone's very special birthday. And so surprising to her, she has someone here who's brought her something. I think it's her, her first husband. And I thought we should really make it, really do it over the top and just sing happy birthday to her. So let's just sing happy birthday. Michelle, by the way.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Michelle. Happy birthday to you.
Hey Doug, did you want to say something? You can use this time, you know, to say, make a few words there by the, on the microphone.
I can talk. I know there's something else going on today too, but most important.
All right. Thanks for coming in. Happy birthday, Michelle. All right. I also would like to go with something out of order, and that's our, our registrar of voters. She has a lot of other titles, but we'll use that this morning. Rita Woodard would like to speak to us as a reminder about a very special event today.
Very special event that a lot of people got up and were at the polls at 6:00 AM this morning getting it ready. And then they opened them at seven o'clock and there's been lots of voters out there. We'd like to remind everybody on the internet and everybody at the press has already taken some pictures and everything that today is the day to go out and vote. I don't care how you vote, just vote. It's important. In, in the local races, each vote really, really counts as to witness the tie we had a couple of years ago. One vote would have made a difference. Today I have pins for the board members too. And for Michelle and Kathleen and Jean and everybody from the election staff. As each year we give pins to all of our workers. As this is some of mine. It's getting too heavy.
Just stay away from open bodies of water, Rita.
It's a new one for this election. And our, our workers do collect these pins and it's a badge of honor that they wear. And they come back year after year. We appreciate them very much because without these volunteers, we could not put on election. We have probably 1,200 people working today for us and helping us put on this election. We appreciate them very much. But we appreciate the voters very much. We'd like to remind them to get out there and vote.
Thank you. One thing I would like to say, just because especially since this is over the web and perhaps might reach somebody, and that is we have a lot of new people who are vote by mail people because they, we've changed and modified and reduced some of the numbers of polling places. So just a reminder to people that if you've not yet sent in your mail ballot, you need to take it personally to a polling place today because if it's not received by today, it will not be counted.
That's right.
And I have a concern, there will be some people who think like your tax bill, that if it's, if it's postmarked today, it will count. But in voting, that's not the way it works. It has to be in the hands of the polling place.
And in the June election, there were about 300 ballots that did not count because they were, they did not get into the office of time. And we do send someone to the Bakersfield Center for the post office and pick up any ballots that they have tonight.
That's good to know, Rita.
And we also go to the local large post offices and pick them up too, so that we catch those. Where one county last year did not do that and there were several thousand votes that they didn't count. But we don't do that.
But still there's that, there's still, it's not, it's not, don't take your chances.
Don't take your chances.
Take it to a polling place and you know it will be counted.
You can take it to any polling site. We also have two drop boxes. You can drop it in before eight o'clock tonight.
And where are those locations?
The one is at the courthouse in the Rose Garden on the east end of the courthouse. It's got red, white and blue flags pointing to it. And there's one down at the Government Plaza across from Mooney Boulevard that is in the, in the driveway there that just drive up and drop it off.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here this morning. I know you have a few things to do today.
Just a few.
At this time, we'd like to do a presentation. And this will be given by United Way regarding an update on the 211 program. Good morning.
Morning, I'm Scarlett Barberena, 1001 East Prosperity, Tulare, California.
I'm Sarah Scott from United Way, 1601 East Prosperity, Tulare, California. We'd like to start off by thanking you for the opportunity to present to you this morning. We know that you're very familiar with 211 and the programs there at United Way. And we are here to give you some continued background because it's a fairly new program still in this county, being launched in March of 2010 of this year. And also to provide an update of what has happened in our first two quarters. We're very excited about the 211 services that we now provide here in Tulare County. And we want to take this moment to especially thank Tulare County for their support and especially HHSA and Mental Health for their ongoing support. For we know that 211 provides a vital service to our community, to our residents, to our service providers, including Health and Human Services. It all provides information on where people can volunteer to make donations and also provides the capacity for local and state disaster information, which is very important. So 211 is a pretty easy program, as we both know. I won't preach to the choir about how it works. But it's a centralized number that people can call to get the resources that they need. And it works pretty well. I want to give you an anecdote because I think that that will help illustrate what has happened in, in the last several months of our existence. We had a man by the name of Isaac call 211, called from his landline phone in need of housing. It's really tough economy out there right now. He wasn't sure what he was going to do for rent, particularly coming up November. And he has two kids and a wife, so there's family of four and just at the end of their ropes desperate. So he calls 211. He gets several resources for housing programs available in Tulare County. And he also was asked about a follow-up call. He agrees to get the follow-up call. And we are able to follow up with him. And through that follow-up call, he is actually then eligible. And we, we found out he was eligible for a program called EFSP, Emergency Family, Emergency Food and Shelter Program. And through that program, he, we were able to pay, help pay rent for November. So him and his family will continue to stay in their residence for November. They have a plan for December to move forward and disaster is averted. And that's kind of the benefit, one of the benefits of 211, though there are many. And I just wanted to give that, that story because this happens every day with a lot of our residents in Tulare County. 211 works by database, so we do a lot of work in our office to keep our database up to date and relevant and accurate. And the way that we know that it works is through a data analysis report. And so that's what Scarlett is going to talk about right now. So you can see what's happened in the first two quarters.
As you can see, there's a clear picture of their increase of calls, call volume of 4,508 calls year to date from since the inception. Because of the activity that was conducted, intense outreach, we were able to promote some of this 211 information out to the rural communities, North County and South County, which also indicates to us who is calling 211. Who is, who are the users that are accessing 211 by just dialing in? Fifty-seven percent, fifty-seven percent indicates are females using this system. And especially population, individuals that self-reported that were 4% migrant and 9% disabled, along with the age range, the users is 59%, 18 to 50 years of age. The household, the report that indicates to us that the household, household is between one and two person in the households, along with children being present, 31% between the ages of six and 18. Some of the outcomes and goals that we've achieved this first and second quarter were the partnership that we were able to create amongst the providers, local community-based organization and government agencies. Because of the partnership, we're able to essentially provide an accurate referral to that individual, that family member, which is so vital to be able to, to keep our system going, moving forward and achieving many of the goals and being so a useful tool to the community. Along with the outreach, again, targeted early Mark Alpa, London. What are some of the needs that our individuals are calling for? The pie really indicates to us housing and utilities as long, along with income support assistance and meals and food are the three major needs that the individuals and family members are in, are requesting in terms of some of the services. And here we have some of the resources that we, that you can search a little bit more further information for those of you that may not be fully up to date with what 211 is or how does it work. But here are some five websites that can help you brush up a little bit more on 211. And again, thank you for your time and thank you HHSA and Mental Health for supporting our program and making it vital for this community. Are there any questions?
Any questions, members? Thank you very much for being here this morning. Appreciate your report. And thanks for helping. This time we will take up our public comments. Anyone wishing to address us this morning on matters that are not on today's agenda, but within our jurisdiction are invited to come forward, give us your name and address. I have one person that's submitted. You don't have to have a public form, but I have one from a Peter Retta.
Good morning, supervisor.
You can raise that up and also the whole thing comes up if you need to raise the whole.
First of all, I'd like to say good morning to the Board of Supervisors and thank you for giving me this time to speak regarding about my job. I was reinstated as a deputy sheriff in 2007. I started patrol in Cutler, Rosy area. My wife got sick and so I asked to be reassigned to bailiff. There was no openings there and so they put me in the jail. I went to pre-trial. I reported several incidents regarding activity inside the pre-trial facility in late December of 2007. Within less than two weeks, I was called into Lieutenant Werta's office and I was told I was being released from probation. There was no scaly hearing and no explanation why I was being released. I then got representation and I received my job back in 2008. And they sent me to Maine Jail, receiving about one week of training. During my work there, there was some difficulty with the job because that what they were doing inside the facility had caused conflict regarding the job. There was things that could not be done with just one deputy. I brought this attention to Sergeant Jones regarding the problem and he says, just do what you have been trained. And I'm talking about the safety cells. Safety cell checks are checked every 15 minutes. Well, if you have a safety cell, safety cell, you can't leave the facility. You can't leave the third floor. Well, during times of my, my job performance, I had to do that because they didn't have enough, enough people there to do the job. And then I, I started putting in request form in to go to bailiff because I didn't want any part of what was going on inside the jail because I knew this was wrong. Approximately in October of 2008, I reported a criminal activity under color of authority, an incident that happened. Within three days, I was called lieutenant's office and I was told I was in an IA regarding my work performance. The whole time, when I, when I started inside the jail, I did not receive any work evaluations or any feedback regarding my work performance and did not do anything, they did not tell me anything that I was doing anything wrong. This whole investigation regarding my work performance started when the Sheriff Department got a tip of a deputy or deputies on a possible hit on them. The investigation told Sergeant Corey Jones to watch videotapes and see if there was a hit. There was no briefing regarding the incident and the security was not doubled. There was no documentation were ever produced regarding the investigation on the hit of the deputy. But they had plenty of time to drum up wrongful allegations against me as a class of whistleblowing retaliation. I was the main focus targeted because you have a deputy is trying to do his job lawfully and speak out of a possible abuse of inmates. I should be hailed as a hero, but instead I was targeted for retaliation. I was trying to keep in explosive situations so the county could not have several lawsuits regarding this abuse and legal activity, but instead I was targeted and terminated. I am willing to take a polygraph test. I'm asking that you look with the fine tooth comb and honestly give me a fair handshake for my job. Because I don't think this should be, this should, this should be done to anybody. And I'm willing to take a polygraph test and tell you what's going on in your jail. And that's the reason why I was terminated. I thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. This matter is on for closed session. Good morning.
Chairman, I'm Crystal Sullivan with County Council's Office. I represent the Sheriff's Department in this matter and we would like to make a comment. This was a multi-day hearing. There was full presentation of evidence and documents. We would direct the board to take careful consideration of the proposed decision by the administrative law judge. The issue with regard to retaliation or the alleged whistleblowing was fully developed in that hearing. Without going to specifics, we direct you to the decision specifically, it's on page 14. Item 35 is retaliation. And you will see the analysis of the hearing officer as she reviewed all the evidence that was presented on that matter. This included the surveillance material and extensive documentation with regard. And with that, I submit, and the department may want to make a comment.
Thank you.
Captain Jim Hinesley of the Sheriff's Office, and I want to assure the board when they review this, that the Sheriff's Department took Mr. Retta's claim seriously. This, this investigation was fully investigated to its extent and that we did go forward with an administrative law judge hearing that lasted more than a day. And we ask that you uphold what the ALJ recommended and use that as your guide. Thank you.
Any other public comments this morning? Actually, I don't think we need to, I mean, this is something we'll be taking up in closed session, so. Okay, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the board then for Board of Supervisors Matters, item number three. And I'll begin with Mr. Ennis on my right.
Yes, I attended the drug court graduation last Thursday night. Very enriching group of people there that have turned their lives around and are going back out into our society and not on that revolving door back and forth to the jail. So I was very glad to be there and see Peter Torque, who commented on his fight against alcoholism and how he beat that. And want to thank Judge Roper and Judge Payden for their outstanding work in this program.
Thank you. Thank you for being there on behalf of the board. Mr. Shida?
This Saturday, I'll be participating in a Symphony League function at the Convention Center. Doors open at 11:00 and it should last until about 2:30. And I will be performing the Strathmore Rumba.
You personally or?
Yeah, me personally.
Thank you. Mr. Cox?
How do I follow up the Strathmore Rumba? There's one thing, I've enlisted the assistance of Supervisor Vanderpool here this afternoon. We're going to be traveling to the city of Alpa. And we've put together a little work crew to install the air conditioning on Pat Hines' house, who was, you folks know, was injured in an accident some months ago. He is progressing well, learning to walk again in Cypress, I believe Cypress Rehab here locally. And so his house is being prepared to make it handicap accessible for the time that he's recovering. So we're going to go out this afternoon and maybe cut our hands on a little bit of metal, put a little ducting in and we'll see how Supervisor Vanderpool works with Supervisor Cox standing over him with a whip.
That's a, that's a picture in my mind that will probably be there for a while.
I had to equal the Strathmore Rumba.
And then we'd like to thank our international traveler back who's been on a fact-finding mission in the foreign country. Welcome back, Mr. Vanderpool.
Well, my fact-finding mission, which I will have to admit to and very proudly say that I'm no longer single, I'm now married. I got married last Saturday and got back from my honeymoon and life is great. I love being married and I love my wife. How's that? I'm learning quick.
That's why I call it a honeymoon. Which comes to an end, by the way.
But go ahead. Thanks, thanks for that tip and advice. First of all, I'd just like to encourage everyone to get out there and, and vote today. Very important day in Tulare County and throughout the United States. Lots of important issues being decided, lots of important races being decided. And please use the power that is given to us in the United States and that is the right to vote. Everyone can vote and please get out there and do that and make your voice be heard. So, and then I also wanted to make mention of another great event that's going to be taking place this week. I will be delivering computers, additional computers down to the community of Tipton. They established a small youth center last year and have had such great attendance and participation by the youth that they've requested or sought additional resources and computers to accompany more youth during their after-school programs and tutoring programs. And so we're very, very, very excited to be able to work with the surplus store here in Tulare County and be able to deliver additional computers so that they can meet the demand that they have in their community for additional computers. And it's great to see students succeed in school and also stay off the streets and not become a part of the gang lifestyle that can definitely prone our youth here in Tulare County. So very excited about that and that's all I have.
Thank you. Yesterday was kind of a special day in Cutler. We have rolled out a pilot program involving a book dispensing machine. And it's a little bit like a red box type of a thing where you, you have to have your county library card, you scan it, you punch the numbers and this little thing rolls out and out comes your book out to the bottom and you can return it to the same location. And we partnered with the local community services district to put this across the street from the school and where the residents live. It's a way of providing additional library services in the areas where we don't have library services currently. So we're very hopeful this will be a successful program and can be modeled elsewhere throughout Tulare County. And thanks to our staff for helping. Didn't realize it had to have a building on top of it till kind of the last minute. So we have a very nice facility around it and, but I'm very happy to see that happen in Cutler and I think that'll be a good thing going forward. Yes, please do get out and vote. Today's an important day and, and don't forget about those absentees that they need to be in the hands of, of a polling place today. At this time, we will take up our consent calendar and there's been a request to pull item number 12 and item number 18. Are there other items that members would like to pull this morning before we take action? If not, I entertain a motion. A motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. And the votes are unanimous. Take up item number 12. Mr. Sheriff, I just made a quick, I'd ask to have that pulled for a separate vote. We went over this during our TCAG meeting a week or two ago, probably two weeks ago. There's an underlying philosophy, if you will, for me, that in addition to making it difficult for a yes vote, this also adds the underlying premise that TCAG can own property, which is, which I am against. So I will be voting not to approve this item because the underlying principle is adding the ability for TCAG to actually own real property.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment.
Surely.
TCAG, in my opinion, needs to own real estate. Otherwise you would not get trail, the ability to build trails on abandoned rightaways. And that's what this item is about. It's basically about the 30-mile rightaway from Strathmore to Jobista that's been abandoned. The rail's been removed. And we want to preserve that rightaway for the future so that we do not get in the same situation that the city of Tulare and Visalia are in on the Santa Fe Trail. So it's very imperative that TCAG own real estate so we can improve trails on abandoned rightaways.
Just a comment to follow up on your comment, Mr. Shida. That problem you just referred to between Tulare and Visalia is also a county problem.
Right.
Because the rightaway that's, is an issue is in, is in the county of Tulare. And even though the project is sort of seen as being a Tulare, city of Tulare, city of Visalia project, we have land which goes right through the, through the middle of Tulare County. And I think that is, makes a very strong case for why we need to have the ability for the association of governments to own property because otherwise it becomes a liability back to the county of this land that goes to the county. Who's going to own this property? So anyway, I, I think there are good reasons why we need to have that, that authority as well.
And I would just make one comment as well as the Chair of the Tulare County Association of Governments. We've had lots of conversations and debate about this amongst the, the board members. And this has to be something that is palatable and can be supported by all, all eight cities in our county, as well as the Board of Supervisors and coming together as a governing board. This also has provisions that make it difficult, I'll say, to amend measure R. And also there are a couple of other provisions that are in addition to being able to own property. But I, I think that like my colleagues have mentioned, it is important for the Association of Governments to have the ability to do so, being that they represent all eight cities. of Governments to have the ability to do so, being that they represent all eight cities. And so, we have a consolidated voice of elected officials and thus representing the population in Tulare County. So, I think it is an important provision in the Tulare County Association of Governments. And this is not dealing with an amendment to Measure R or anything. This is just giving the power to the Tulare County Association of Governments to preserve infrastructure and, I guess, transportation corridors and other means in Tulare County. So, I'm very supportive of this.
Entertain a motion?
I'd move for approval.
Second. Motion by Mr. Ennis, seconded by Mr. Shida. Please cast your votes. And the vote's four to one for approving Cox opposing. And then, we'll take us to item number eighteen, donation of a vehicle to the Farmersville Animal Control Division. Mr. Shida asked to have this pulled.
Morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name's Kevin Mars. I'm with the Tulare County Health and Human Service Agency. Before you today is the approval of a donation of one of our animal control vehicles to Farmersville PD. This vehicle basically was part of the process, Tulare County process of replacement. And at this point, we saw a need that Farmersville could utilize this animal control vehicle. At this time, Chief Christic is here from Farmersville PD. And at this point, I'd also like to acknowledge Richard Lamb, who was with Motorpool, who did a great job in reference to detailing this out for the chief in Farmersville PD. Have any questions? I'd be delighted to answer them at this time.
I don't have a question, but this is one of those occasions when we do have surplus vehicles that we can give to communities or nonprofits that will help them do their job better. Surprisingly, in the last six months, set of road calls, I've been getting mostly about animal calls. There is a heightened need for animal control. And so, I think the unit would be well-used in the city of Farmersville.
I would agree.
And it's great for the county to be able to utilize surplus vehicles to help our sister agencies in the county. So, yes.
And I think, just another comment that we need to make, too, is that this is a great example of the partnership between the county and cities to help serve the people that we all represent even better. So, just wanted to add that.
I'd move approval.
Motion by Mr. Shida, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous.
Thank you very much.
We're right at nine-thirty, so we'll take up our nine-thirty timed items. And item number four is a public hearing, request from the Fire Department to approve fire hazard abatement cost recovery. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Cindy Delman, and I'm a fire inspector with Tulare County Fire. TCFD is requesting the board to order the costs associated with the abatement of fire hazards to be recorded in the office of the county recorder as a lien. The contractor's costs plus the administrative fees came to a total of $12,388.64 for the cleanups of eleven parcels throughout Tulare County. We request that the county auditor place such costs on the county tax roll as special assessments. Last, we request the board to adopt the attached resolution with Exhibit A, the parcel analysis. The contractor's cost is $9,005,017.64. The admin fees were $2,871. Do you have any questions for me this morning?
Any questions by members?
No, sir.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so we'll pull up in a public hearing at this time. Is there anyone wishing to address this on this matter this morning? Please come forward, give us your name and address. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion by Mr. Ennis, seconded by Mr. Shida. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Have a great day. Item number five, the public hearing, request from the Resource Management Agency to accept the general rule exemption as the appropriate environmental document and approved tentative subdivision tract number TM eight oh seven. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dana Mietlin with the Resource Management Agency. The project that I bring before you today is a request submitted by Lane Engineers on behalf of Keith and Lisa Wilson for the tentative subdivision tract number TM eight oh seven. The property is located on the north side of Avenue three ninety-three, approximately 1,000 feet west of Road thirty-four, adjacent to the south boundary of the Kings River Golf and Country Club, and approximately two miles southeast of the city of Kingsburg. The site is zoned RA twelve point five, which is rural residential 12,500 square foot minimum, and contains a single-family residence, accessory buildings, and a ponding basin. The properties to the north, east, and west are all zoned for residential use, and the property to the south is zoned for agricultural use. The project is a tentative subdivision to divide a 2.59 acre parcel into two residential lots and a remainder. The subject site is the remainder parcel from a previous division of land. Tentative parcel map number PPM zero three dash zero five two, which was approved in 2004 by the Site Plan Review Committee. According to the Subdivision Map Act, Section 66426, a tentative and final map is required for all subdivisions creating five or more parcels. This project would create a total of six parcels and a remainder from the original piece of land, and therefore, a tentative and final parcel map are required for processing.
Mr. Chairman, while she's on that, can we go back one, if you would?
Sure.
I'm looking at, you know, I see on this lot, one, two, which are the, which would be the L, bottom L piece, is that correct?
This, this is...
One, two, and then three.
This is the piece of land that we're talking about, right?
This map we have is on eight and a half by eleven. It's real small, so we're, so the L shape at the bottom of the back where's L, those are lots one and two, then the remainder is the tall piece. That's one, is it correct? And that's two.
Two and remainder.
And then, the third is the long, the long piece.
The remainder.
Okay, great. It was hard to see on here. Thank you.
Sorry. Is that it?
That was it.
Okay. The 1982 Kings River Plan designates the site as residential, and the proposal meets the minimum size requirements for the RA twelve point five zone. Okay, that's actually a picture of the site from the street. The proposed division would create rural residential lots in an area located just south of the Kings River Golf Course. The project area is surrounded by residential uses to the northeast, west, and agricultural uses to the south. The project is in compliance with the Tulare County General Plan, the 1982 Kings River Plan, and all applicable elements. And again, our piece of property right here. This area east of the project is tentative subdivision number seven seventy-eight, right here, was approved in 2006. And this area here was the previous parcel map. So, this was parcel map zero three zero five two, and this was the remainder of that division Avenue three ninety-three would be required to be improved to a Class II standard across the entire subdivision frontage, and that would include lots one and lots two and the remainder. The existing ponding basin is of adequate size to provide service to the additional lots. Also, there is an existing residence on the proposed remainder lot that contains an existing septic system and domestic well. Proposed lots one and two would be provided water service from the Fairway Mutual Water Company and have individual septic tank leach line systems. I do want to mention that yesterday, staff received an inquiry about the project with regard to water supply, the septic system and curb and gutter requirements for the And staff is recommending that your board take option number one and accept the general rule exemption as the appropriate environmental document, approve tentative subdivision tract number TM eight oh seven, and adopt the findings and conditions of approval contained in the resolution. And pending any questions you may have, that concludes staff's report.
Any questions by our members?
No, sir.
Just to comment that this is a very unique piece of real estate in my district where it's almost entirely agriculture, except the incorporated and unincorporated communities. But this 1982 plan has resulted in quite a significant amount of homes in that area. And as you can see, there's still additional land being developed. But again, unique to Tulare County, certainly unique to District Four.
That's correct, and this particular land is designated for residential growth in the Kings River Plan, so it is appropriate.
Thank you.
Welcome.
This is a public hearing. So, anyone at this time wishing to address this on this matter, please come forward and give us your name and address. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. I have some letters for the board that I can give to the clerk now. I apologize for not submitting them earlier. Good afternoon, my name is Cara Birdfire. I believe I've met some of you before. I work at California Rural Legal Assistance as an attorney, and I'm here regarding this project. The main reason that I am here is I'm representing a group of residents called the Metheny Tract Committee and also other residents of Tulare County. The reason that we're here is that Tulare County's housing element is out of compliance and has been so since 2009. I'm going to draw your attention to the last two pages of the letter, which are not stapled. I apologize. I woke up very early to get this letter done, and...
Excuse me, ma'am, do you have a copy for our counsel?
You know, I only have, I have copies of the last two pages, but I don't have a copy for your counsel. I apologize.
That's right. Clerk's meeting's available, too.
But basically, this is just, this is a housing element compliance report by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. It states very clearly that the Tulare County housing element is out of compliance and consistent with state housing element law, particularly Government Code six five zero zero three point five, and Leisure Communications Incorporated v. City of Walnut Creek. A Board of Supervisors, a local government, cannot make a decision of the stature or any action when the housing element is out of compliance, because although your department or the department that just made that presentation stated that this plan is in compliance with the general plan, it actually can't be. It's per se out of compliance because the housing element, which is one of the parts of the general plan, is not complete because it is out of compliance. Thus, the board cannot make any decisions regarding developments such as approving a subdivision tract map at this time, because that would be a violation of state housing element law. It's outlined even further in this letter. I also wanted to very quickly point to your attention that we wrote a letter to the Board of Supervisors on June sixteenth, 2010, which we personally delivered to all the members of this board regarding our concerns with the housing element, one of those being that over 4,000 sites that were identified in the housing element did not have adequate infrastructure to support development, including sewer and water capacity. Also, we believe that because the housing element has been out of compliance, it does have a disparate impact based on race and national origin of residents in Tulare County in violation of federal and state housing and civil rights laws. And I can answer any other questions, but all the other information is in that letter.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question. You've submitted a document entitled Housing Element Compliance Report?
Yes.
It says eleven of eleven in the upper right-hand corner. Do you see the document that I'm referring to?
Mm-hmm.
And this has one, two, three, four, five, seven counties listed. There are fifty-eight counties in California. Is there a reason why you didn't submit a complete report?
Because it would be a waste of paper and resources, the Tulare County housing element... I could, I mean, submit your report, the entire report, but I figured that the only one of particular notice would be page eleven, as it pertains to the Tulare County housing element. Also, the Resource Management is very clear. I mean, I speak to them on a regular basis, and they're, they understand that the housing element is out of compliance. I don't think there's any dispute as to that. And you, I mean, you can even place a call to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. But if you would like, I can forward you the full copy.
I guess the point I'm making is that it's my understanding that most counties in California are out of compliance with the housing element as deemed by the state's measurement. Is that correct?
I'm not prepared to make a statement, which is that, I mean, you can go and look on this report yourself.
Also, is there a reason why you didn't raise this before the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission was, is just there to make recommendations to this board, and in order to exhaust our administrative remedies, our clients would only be required to make a comment at this particular public hearing.
I understand that. I just wonder why you didn't raise this earlier in the process. This is somewhat eleventh hour, wouldn't you agree?
I think that this board and the county should be complying with state housing element law. I wrote this letter to you on June sixteenth of 2010. We were very clear in the letter that approval of any development such as this was in violation of housing element law, as your housing element was out of compliance. Nobody responded to our letter. I will say that Resource Management has been really helpful in talking to us about where they are in the process. We submitted comments to HCD about our concerns, and their most recent letter has reflected many of those concerns. We're just asking that Tulare County comply with the law. And we believe that any approval today would be in violation of housing element law.
Any approval of any housing whatsoever would be in violation of housing law pursuant to your argument?
Of any development, of any actions or projects as defined in the Government Code. But particularly, we were discussing this project today.
Now, Mr. Chairman, this matter is on the board's closed session agenda, and I would suggest that we adjourn to closed session after your board members have had an opportunity to ask any questions, if they have any.
Very good. Any questions, members? All right. Anybody else wishing to address? Thank you, ma'am. Any other person wishing to address this on this matter, please come forward at this time during this public hearing. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Pat Teeter with Lane Engineers. Welcome to California, huh?
Yes.
This is a really minor request. Lots have been sitting there vacant for years. That whole area there has grown very, very slow. I really see absolutely no reason to deny this thing. I don't know about all this. So, if there's any questions, try to answer them.
Very good. Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else? Then, we will keep the public hearing open. We will adjourn it to closed session to consult with our counsel, and we'll be back in a short time, I think.
This is item A on your board's closed session agenda.
The Henny Mooner?
Board is back in session after consultation with our legal counsel over this matter. Because legal issues have been raised that were not addressed prior to this time and have, our staff has not had an opportunity to research it, I would entertain a motion. We continue this matter for two weeks, so we have an opportunity to accomplish that. So moved.
Second.
Yeah, and we will leave the public hearing open for the matter as it's continued for two weeks. We have, I'm sorry, the motion was made by...
I made the motion.
By Mr. Vanderpool and seconded by Mr. Ennis. Before we take action on...
We don't have a meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, we don't.
Our next meeting would be November thirtieth.
All right, then, we'll continue the matter. Was that okay with the makers of the motion?
After the ninth, but that would be too soon.
Continue to the thirtieth. And before we take action on the motion, our counsel, our CAO, want to make a comment.
But that's on a different matter.
That's on a different... Well, I'd like to make a comment.
All right.
I certainly don't, do not appreciate this matter not being brought up in front of the Planning Commission, but it also points out very strongly why our general plan has an element for unincorporated communities to grow, because the only way we can meet a housing element requirement is that the unincorporated communities will have to grow to give our residents an opportunity for low-income housing. So, I think this more or less justifies the avenue we've taken in the general plan.
All right. Please cast your votes. This continues to November thirtieth. Motion is four to one. Cox voting no for affirmative, so this matter's continued to November thirtieth. All right, that will bring us to, uh-oh, I may have left my agenda back in twenty-four years for a quick... Item's not timed, item number twenty-seven, which is a request from the Resource Items not timed, item number twenty-seven, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to adopt pursuant to Government Code Section six five eight five eight, an urgency measure, the interim zoning ordinance prohibiting establishment of marijuana. I noticed that it just says marijuana. My assumption is there's a couple of other words that should probably be in there, non-medical for interim period of time. Morning, Jason.
Good morning, Supervisors. Chairman Worthy. Happy Election Day.
Thank you.
The item before you today...
Jason, where did you take that, that picture? Is that in your house?
That's, that's actually, no, it's not my house.
Oh, my God.
That's actually from one of the medical marijuana dispensaries from a couple of years ago.
I was just teasing you, Pete.
But no.
You could take the fifth if you needed to.
Yeah, I changed that. I plead the fifth. The item before you today is, as a result of the proposed Proposition Nineteen, which is the Regulate, Control, and Tax Cannabis Act of 2010, and the item actually before you today is an interim zoning ordinance as an urgency measure. And just a quick Proposition Nineteen summary, and this is pending approval by voters today, but if approved, the proposition would change some of the state codes or modify them to, in regards to marijuana regarding possession, transportation, cultivation, consumption, and sales. This is potential sales, including taxation and the buying and selling of. The actual proposition, the way it's worded, would leave it up to the local jurisdictions. The request before your board today is to adopt the interim ordinance prohibiting certain consumption of marijuana and certain cultivation, harvesting, and processing of marijuana, and this does not apply to medical use. The county already has existing ordinances in place regarding medicinal marijuana. And I'll get in, to a minute, I'll explain what I mean by certain consumption. The overall objectives of the ordinance are to allow the county to research and develop relevant, develop relevant policies if approved. This would help protect and maintain the health, safety, and welfare of the county and its citizens. This ordinance would be only for a temporary period of time. The actual ordinance would only last for forty-five days unless extended by your board. That's why as part of the request, a public hearing has been set for December fourteenth. As well, the objective would be to prohibit certain consult, certain consumption, cultivation, processing, and harvesting for an interim, interim period of time. And please do note that your board received an updated draft ordinance that was handed out to you. Processing and harvesting was not included in the original packet. That has been amended, and so that is available to you. As I mentioned, certain use of marijuana, what staff means by that is that it would apply to public places and adjacent areas, the use of marijuana in those areas within public view, and not in secure enclosed buildings or structures. This ordinance would not apply to areas outside of that, in other words, in an enclosed building or secure structure. And that is detailed in the ordinance. Again, the request before your board is to adopt the interim zone ordinance prohibiting certain consumption, as just previously explained, of marijuana, including the cultivation, processing, and harvesting of marijuana, and again, not for medicinal purposes. Any questions?
Mike, one question I have, Jason. Is this designed to be triggered by whatever happens in the vote today? In other words, it does not go into effect unless the Measure Nineteen is passed by the voters of California? Okay. So in other words, this, this, this may not go into existence at all, depending upon what happens in the vote.
Upon approval.
Which may not be decided tonight, obviously, because you, you don't certify the votes until sometime further.
Twenty-eight days after the election, so not later than November thirtieth. But statewide propositions, the Secretary of State has to certify what the vote was. So we may not know for some days if, in fact, Prop Nineteen, any of the propositions pass or fail.
Well, and I was just going to make, make the comment that I think that this is, you know, obviously, it's, it's good to point out that if this doesn't pass, nothing happens, it's, nothing's triggered, obviously, but should it pass, this gives our staff the time to do the due diligence necessary to do what we have to do as a county to provide the security and safety for our residents. So I'm definitely very supportive of this. And with that, I'm going to move for approval.
Motion? Second, any comment before we go?
Yes, this is another example of not addressing probably the key issue in this whole marijuana, medical and recreational, is the issue of distribution. That's where all our government agencies are having problems with, is how marijuana is distributed. This law or initiative doesn't help a bit on distribution.
Well, unfortunately, I agree with you. The issue of, let's call it, non-medical marijuana, you might otherwise refer to it as recreational marijuana, the sale by, say, storefront is regulated by each local agency. So you could have the county with one regulation and a city with another regulation, and it requires an affirmative action on the part of each agency to put that in place. There's no moratorium on that because if Prop Nineteen passes, your board would have to take an affirmative action authorizing it in order for storefront sales to occur.
We have a motion by Mr. Vandepoel, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. That concludes our agenda open session today. We have a number of items in closed session, counsel, that we need to address.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. Already considered, item A. You have items B through N, as in Nancy. I do anticipate announcements. I'd also like to add, barred to items A and L, the county council's office represented the department in these personnel appeal proceedings, and accordingly, the section of the county council's office that did so will not be sitting with or advising your board in the event that you require outside counsel. We have an ethical wall in place in the office and should be able to bring in someone from my office, and if necessary, we can always continue the matter and obtain other outside counsel. But we will not be present for those discussions. I believe Mr. Rousseau has a comment on that.
I also need to disclose relative to item L that I have a minor past personal relationship with the appellant, and that will not be considered by the board in its decision regarding the appeal.
Okay. Very good. Thank you all for being here. We'll go to closed session.
item L to consider the discipline dismissal or release of a public employee. On a motion by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Ashida, the board voted unanimously to deny the appeal and affirm the dismissal of a sheriff deputy. On item M, once again, is Gene Rousseau, county administrative officer, reporting out of closed session to consider the discipline dismissal or release of a public employee. On a motion by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Ashida, the board voted unanimously to deny the appeal and affirm the dismissal of a sheriff correctional deputy.